This conference will now be recorded.
Emily Richardson has left.
Okay.
Emily, how you doing? That's Mary. So you go to Orangeburg on Tuesday.
I think you're pretty old today.
I did. That's what you talk.
That's a small.
Turn it on.
She votes three times.
Early, early, early.
Early, often. You use the browser, you got the mail, and then you have to people. And then you probably use like that.
That is unfortunate.
I've heard Roger knows a few people.
That's what he does during this time of year. He gathers votes. I can notice here.
He handed that out. He handed that out. My last one already.
Yeah. I keep the copy in the mail.
You know, that's a nice service yesterday. I really liked Paul. I buy two for taking others today.
They do. They start and they sell.
One of my favorites. October 19th, committee order. Chaplain?
When we meet. Your honor, your father, all we have been receiving, laughter, blessing, and guidance. Our mayor, city administrator, also next to us, make those decisions so important for our city and citizens. We also ask for protection for our purchase sponsors, police, sheriffs, firefighters, and all who has their lives for their parents. Especially if you're building for all of them, there were exams possible, their staffs, very important thing here to our, our community, particularly during Chinese virus pandemic. We are grateful for our republic with so many sacrifices for our lives, some remain injured to keep our country safe. Now, we ask for protection for us and our loved ones, as you have just shared tonight, to give us your power and control me to them. All this, yes, in our honor. But the reasons to rely on the United States of America and the Republic of America, our nation, our nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
So they vote well, please.
Lehman?
Here.
Olin?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Fogg?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
And Wyman?
Here.
Now, we're going to open a public hearing on the annexation of the Gables and the Craftsman Drive. It's going to be right areas that will be up here on the board. Does anybody here that would like to make a comment about this annexation proposal come forward to the microphone and say your name and address?
My name is Emily Coleman, and I'm the chairperson of the Gable Coleman Association. And I sent a question yesterday morning with five questions to the city administrator, Dr. Walsh, no, people need to shut off. And I don't know if you have a list of questions, but I think I speak to probably almost everyone in our subdivision that we think that there's lots of advantages of being a citizen, of being an official citizen, Mr. Bagels. But I'm hoping that maybe you can answer those questions.
Some of them I won't have answers right now, but when you find the, it's open here somewhere. And then you send another one, or an update this morning, right? Okay. And the first part, yes, it does include the phase two. The agenda heading is kind of misleading because number four is phase one, or one through four is phase one, and then phase five is, or annexation number five is the actual second phase. So we've got that one. The maintenance of Craftsman Drive, yes, that will, that is part of this, is it is annexing Craftsman Drive, so that will become under city maintenance. And to include snow plowing, now, I mean, I'll be just totally upfront with you, you know, it will be down the list. I mean, it's not going to be first on the list because they try to get the major thoroughfares done first before they get to the other areas. The streetlights, I do not have an answer for that yet today. I tried to, just ran out of time today to get the answer to that. But certainly, yes, we will, we will look at that. I'm not sure how they're set up now. Are they metered? Are they through Evergy, where you just pay a lease amount every, every month? Yes, that will probably be real easy. We'll just have that changed over to the city, so. The stormwater, that was a new one on me, so I haven't had a chance to look into what the stormwater issues are, but, you know, yeah, we'll, we'll look into that and figure out how can we solve those issues, so. Let's see, the how soon this will be official. The way the process works is that we had to do the petition, then we had to have the hearing. We cannot, council cannot consider it until their next meeting. I think it's 14 days officially that, that it has to set, so next meeting, they will be able to consider an ordinance to, to make it official. And then it will become effective really right then. We've kind of got an agreement with the Pettis County Fire Department that we take over the services right then, as opposed to, I think it's, goodness, it can be up to three years, I think, before you actually provide. But we just do it, we just agree with them that we pay them their taxes, and then, and then we take over the services right away. I am not sure, I think your 2020 taxes will still be the county's, but I'm not sure of that. I don't, I do not know the answer to that, so I guess I shouldn't speculate, so, but we can find out for sure.
You should see, somebody's name.
Anne.
Anne, you have a.
No, no, I'm sorry, I did some longer, you know, she had a question about Cambridge Drive and that's not included in the annexation.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I missed that one. I read over that one, thank you. No, Cambridge Drive, this will only get part of the, part of the properties that border Cambridge Drive. So really, that will be the only border. Now, eventually, if we get the other side, then yes, absolutely, the Cambridge would come in. There are some neighbors to your north that are not in the city limits as well, so Cambridge would have to be contiguous before we could bring it in. So either these folks, or these folks, or both, would have to annex before we'd start bringing in Cambridge Drive. Does that make sense? Did I miss any others of the question? Okay. Well, thank you, and I appreciate your, your email, so.
You should see pretty quickly a significant decrease in the water and sewer rates. I'm not, I'm not sure which rate is current. Of course, then you're going to be on the fire grease and coverage, and then of course, and then you'll have garbage, pickups, you're thoroughly not doing recycling. Maybe we'll get back to that, we don't know yet. Anybody else want to make a comment? Come on up to the microphone, if you please.
You already made this discussion, my hearing, I'm sorry, but is that second phase, is it going to be annexed at the same time? It's, it's south of us, will it be included?
Yes, it's included.
Will it develop?
It, it's actually number five.
It's included, okay.
Yeah.
You say your name.
Mike Warner.
Thank you. Oh.
Any other comment? So we'll close this hearing. Thanks for coming.
And like I mentioned, the, the actual ordinance won't be considered until the next meeting, so. Thank you all.
Okay. You need a, I need a motion approved events from October 6th, councilman?
Send it.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Both? Draft Divisor Board, same.
Motion approved, aye.
All favor?
Aye.
Why not some administration?
We've got two items on the agenda tonight. First one is a financial update. Administrator Shaw, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Once again, we had some really good news, and this news is really the fair, the time period that would have covered the fair. So what we receive in October is primarily from August cash register sales within the city, so, so that should have included the, the fair in comparing to previous years. So you can see, for the month of October, our sales tax were up 18.1%. If you, but then that includes the extra 1/8 cent that was approved by the voters in August and was effective in January. So if you take out that, the effects of that, we're up 12.2%, which is still very huge. And then fiscal year to date, we're up 3.9%. If you remember, we budgeted 2%, so if you take all of the, and then, I'm sorry, use tax was, was only up 0.6%, but it was still up instead of down. And as you remember, last year was, was phenomenally up, so I, I think that's good if we can just stay even on use tax. So if you look at total sales and use tax were up $292,000 without considering the extra eighth of a cent, and that's $134,000 over our budget. So all good news. Franchise and cigarette taxes are up also just a little bit. Again, 9.1%, so that's, that's really good news. The transportation taxes are off a little bit, which, that's really our gas tax, and that comes through the state, as well as the sales tax on motor vehicle fees. And, and there's one other in there that's escaping me right now. But I think that's really a symptom of travel being down statewide, because we get a, a portion of that, not so much what happens within the city. So that, that is a portion, so, but that's really the only bad news on this whole report, so. Are you happy to answer any questions?
Yeah, this is August sales.
Correct.
And we, you know, Kevin and I actually sat down, like, which in August, we sat down, maybe we fill out, we tried to compare numbers. What was going to happen to our sales tax, you were concerned if we didn't have the fair. So then we determined that actually, that August sales tax numbers historically are not good. I think they ranked number seven, and so, you know, we really didn't know what to anticipate. We're, I think, we're really pleased with, pleased with this number. It doesn't mean that we don't need the fair.
Yeah.
The hospitality industry is taking a big yet.
Yeah, that's a good point. It's, it's, it's not that every industry is up, it's that some industries are up enough to cover what the industries that are, are way down, and the hospitality industries are way down, so.
Some, some restaurants are doing better now, obviously, they're having a difficult time. Any other questions, comments, for Kevin?
The next item, just a routine records destruction request. Personnel department has identified some records that have met the retention requirements.
The motion is destroy those records.
So do.
All favor?
Aye.
Both? Public Works, Chair Lehman, please.
Good evening. I have a few items tonight. The first one will be, that time of year for us at the council, and up against to come forward as we proceed towards our next year's budget, which will kick in January, that first Saturday. So they'll be giving presentations to us, to kind of update us on what the program is all about, and what they need, and what they need.
Time, Roger, if you will come forward from the cemetery area, it's your call.
Thank you. Just kind of wanted to give you a little update here, and things as to what we're doing at the cemetery, what we've done for years, kind of where we're at down the road here. With the cemetery that we're providing various services to citizens in today Pettis County and surrounding areas. We provide our casket burrows, cremation burrows, in-ground and above-ground, and the column burial that we install. Since we were founded in 1866, there have been 24,450 burrows through September of this year in the cemetery. Currently, this year, we've had 117 burrows through 20, uh, 20th September. We've sold 90 grave lots, and we've sold 11 of our niches. Personnel, workforce at the cemetery, we're setting military markers also, veterans, markers is what they're called. We're overseeing concrete companies work. What they're doing is setting headstones to ensure proper location, including for the size of the headstone that's being put in. There have been a total of 65 this year, and 13 military markers that we have set so far. During the spring, and the summer, and the fall, boy, this has been one of those years with all the rain, you back through the summer months. We're mowing approximately 70 acres. Each week, we're bagging some grass, leaves when needed. In the winter, we're working on stones, straightening those weather permitting. We're working on trimming trees, on our mowing equipment, upgrading things there. Clearing roadways if snow and need. Public Works has got more than they can handle, and we're able to do that on our own. Teaboot Cemetery, which is located on South Rand, city took that over in 2001. Currently, 233 people have been buried in that cemetery. A lot of people don't realize Calver Cemetery lies within Crown Hill, owned by the Catholic Church, and we do all of their burrows for them. We don't sell the grave lots there, they have a gentleman that does that. The opening, closing fee is there, they're collected by the city. They also pay us a monthly fee to maintain those grounds. And Calver is founded in 1868, two years behind Crown Hill. There's 3,863 people buried there through September of this year. And going forward, our strategy is something that we're going to need to look at here in the next few years, is that we have currently about 2,200 grave lots left. This is up in the new addition of the cemetery. Some of these aren't ideal grave lots, their next to roadway ditches, water issues become a problem there. We've worked on part of that, but that's kind of where we're at. So that's something that we're going to need to look at, laying out some new roads, and planning ahead to try to play out some new grave lots. All of our roadways within the cemetery, as of 2019, they are all asphalt, which really changed the looks of the old apartment cemetery. This started back in July of '13, we have completely done every road in the cemetery. And it's really made it a lot safer in that aspect, that we're not mowing around gravel roads and everything. Another thing that I would like to look at in the next few years here, probably sooner better than later, not a high-dollar expense, is create a cremation area only. Establish this area with some smaller grave lots, we don't need a full grave lot in order to bury cremains. And make this with some landscaping and more appealing to the families that serve. And the column burial, you know, we put in back in 2019, had 64 ditches in it. Currently, we've sold 14 of those since last November. And, you know, that's trending to kind of be the way, especially in the bigger cities, we're seeing a slight increase here, but still, a lot of traditional here too, but it's, it's headed that way. Another strategy that I would like to look at in this upcoming budget year is trying to put in new information of both the boards that's weatherproof out in the cemetery. To help a lot of people that come in from out of town, that's not associated with our community, that don't get open to, things like that. They don't realize that we're owned by the city. Putting this up within the cemetery grounds to where the people can view this, with our policies and regulations and things like that on it, just to save us a few headaches down the road. So other than that, things you do, anybody have any questions?
For councilmembers?
Yeah. Since you need a policy of, of laws, can you give us a couple of examples of what that's done?
Timewise, it helps us straighten. Complaint wise, we've had three or four, that's, you know, and most of the people that complain have been from out of town. They didn't realize, or didn't get the word that we have passed this order and some things. But it has made it a lot easier for the guys to maintain things. I do not want to go back to where we were at. I heard it is. It's, you know, people are making some changes as far as the shepherd lifts and bases, the vinyl companies, they're selling bases and putting them on headstones. No, it is definitely helping.
Any other questions? Well, I expect it, so.
Yes. Thank you, guys. Are we getting help, particularly with the steel?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Yes, and to expand on that a little bit, basically, Roger and I talked a little bit to, we'll bring you a budget next year that will not include them, but then, of course, if we can get them, it just, it's just, it will help, and it will help us save. But basically, we talked, we'll, we'll budget for if we can't, if we don't receive help from them, because the last three or four years, really, they've been inconsistent, so that's, that's really hurt us, so.
Yeah, so we, we have twice more people than probably, yeah.
Yeah. Now, we were able to, to, to get some pretty good part-time folks this year, but then I understand in years past, that's been hard to do, so. So it's, it's, it's going to be an ongoing challenge, but, yeah, we want to make sure the funds are set in there to be able to do it, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jeff?
My next order has to do with agreement with Burns and McDonald's. What just comprises of, in this year's strategic study, that the staff have recruited a initiative to develop a master plan with the water and water wastewater utilities included in those, like our rate studies, and also our hydropower model. Those two help manage the effectiveness and efficiency in the planning and our funding for the growth of our city. In accordance with this, we also put out a grant fee, and in that process, they have identified Burns and McDonald's are best qualified for going in service. The council has accepted that is to properly recommend our residents, so letting data from the staff and as authorized to move forward in the negotiation. As a result of these negotiations, the staff has now recommended entering into an agreement, including this full support for wastewater, water master plants, along with the rate studies, in the total compensation of 439,200 dollars. We have to excuse the choppiness of talking with the ramp on the funds for that, so.
Thank you, you're a good guy. Any questions for council? Leave the ordinance, please, all right?
Number 2020 dash 2088. An ordinance has been accepted to professional services task order agreement, and task orders number one, two, and three, binding between the cities today in Missouri, and Bertha McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated, for professional services related to the integrated wastewater and water master plan and hydraulic model.
I agree, second.
All favor? I propose.
Number 2020 dash 188. An ordinance has been accepted to professional services task order agreement, and task orders number one, two, and three, binding between the cities today in Missouri, and Bertha McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated, for professional services related to the integrated wastewater and water master plan and hydraulic model.
On the passage.
More call points?
Fogg?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman? Lehman?
Yes.
Olin? Dawson?
Yes.
All favor?
Okay, the next item that I have has to do with water also, and it's a contact, which we're going to add on to. You recall, we've been doing this with Engineering Survey and Services as we're going along with this plan, as we're going through the last one, we proved it. It's been ordered through Street Broadway and Ohio Avenue. Staff has negotiated with them, ESS, the ESS and S, for engineering oversight and inspection services now for this project area. They are recommending services for this project within the existing agreement of ESS in the city, in a compensation of $99,910.
Any questions for the council, or the question? None is here tonight? Leave the ordinance, please.
Number 2020 dash 209. An ordinance has been accepted to stepping an additional project under the system agreement binding between the cities today in Missouri, and engineering services and services, for construction, engineering, inspection services on 2018, wire system improvement on rack number four, Eric Street, Broadway Avenue, and Ohio Avenue to Engineer Avenue.
Second reading.
All favor? I propose.
Bill number twenty twenty dash twenty-eighty-nine. An ordinance has proven in accepting an additional project under an existing agreement bind between the cities today in Missouri and engineering surveys and services for construction, engineering inspection services on the twenty eighteen water system improvements contract number four, Third Street, Broadway Avenue, and Ohio Avenue to Engineer Avenue.
Final passage, second.
More call points?
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
All in favor?
My next item that I have has to do with sidewalk design. Those of you that have been downtown and on the main area, Main Street, Kentucky, when others there is new building that's gone up there, has to do with trade as well. And in the course of the construction and what's also been developed in that area, some of the sidewalking and curving was, was something destroying first, well, it was old in the first place for a long time. So, as we go forward, we need to figure out what we're going to do to replace this, because if we were just replacing it with concrete wall and all that, and everything else with that, so. The staff has recommended that we come up with a design of what our options are to do this and engage a engineering firm that's on call with us to complete this study for seven thousand six hundred dollars.
Any council discussion?
This is gonna be great. I can't wait to see what the new development is gonna happen in the next year, because if you notice just across the street from Katy Shaw Health, a business has already started painted this design.
That direction of the residence.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a block that was listed that.
So, it's gonna be, it's gonna be amazing to see what happens in the next year.
And that category is very found real.
That's right.
It's pretty nice, very nice.
Main Street, giving that for life.
All the ordinance?
Bill number twenty twenty dash one ninety. An ordinance has proven in accepting an agreement bind between the cities today in Missouri and Wilson and Company for engineering services relating to the design and construction survey of sidewalks along North Kentucky Avenue from Second Street to Main Street and North Monticello Avenue from the Nizzlock Alley to Main Street.
Second.
All right. All opposed?
Bill number twenty twenty dash one ninety. An ordinance has proven in accepting an agreement bind between the cities today in Missouri and Wilson and Company for engineering services relating to the design and construction survey of sidewalks along North Kentucky Avenue from Second Street to Main Street and North Monticello Avenue from the Nizzlock Alley to Main Street.
Final passage.
Second.
More call points?
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Richardson?
All in favor?
My next item has to do with the track loader repair, the tracks on the unit needs some tension, and staff have advised, uh, mechanics that can do the repairs for one thing, and they actually found two vendors, both were obtained from those vendors, and the staff recommends that we do the repair with recent track service LLC at a cost of sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars and sixty cents. That includes transportation too, and further child and their sickle.
Any council discussion? All right, read your ordinance, please.
Bill number twenty twenty dash one ninety-one. An ordinance has proven in accepting quotes bind between the cities today in Missouri and Diesel Track Service LLC for repair of the nine fifty-three feet track loaders used by the Water and Streets Department Division.
Second reading.
Second. All right. All opposed?
Bill number twenty twenty dash one ninety-one. An ordinance has proven in accepting quotes bind between the cities today in Missouri and Diesel Track Service LLC for repair of the nine fifty-three feet track loaders used by the Water and Streets Division.
Final passage.
All right. More call please?
Foster?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
All in favor?
My last item has to do with senior services in the six hundred block on West Thirty-Second Street. Uh, this is a little bit of a complicated explanation of what's been so there to our city, Main Street.
Okay. Yes, um, might be, well, basically along Thirty-Second Street, there are, uh, uh, some properties in that, in that block. It's basically Grand and Missouri to, oh, it goes a little bit further than that, it actually goes almost to the edge of town, to where, uh, the front part of the lots are in the city limits, but then the rear land, um, is not in the city limit. So, the, the city limits actually dissect the, the property owner's property. And, um, uh, that gets confusing when somebody builds a house on the rear part of their land, which is what we have in this case, um, Mr. Capitula, is how you pronounce it? I can't pronounce his name, but anyway, um, he built a, a property, or built a house on the rear land instead of the front land. Well, then that becomes confusing when you're, when you're trying to figure out the city services, like water, sewer, all of those kinds of things, is it the in-town rate or the out-of-town rate? The house is actually on the out-of-town. So, basically, we, uh, uh, he agreed and, and really wants the house to be in the city limit so that he enjoys the fire protection and the, and the police protection and then the, the in-town rates for city sewer and water. Uh, so he has, uh, given us a petition to annex. We will bring that hearing, we've published the, the hearing, it will come to your next council meeting, and then it'll be fourteen days after that, so the following council meeting, you can actually take up the ordinance to bring him into the city limit. Well, he wants to get the sewer connection done, understandably, before the bad weather starts hitting and those kinds of things. So, we did a real simple agreement, Brenda's negotiated very well with him, that, that, okay, he's, he's agreeable that, you know, the petition's already started, the process has already started, he will continue that process, we'll go ahead and let him hook up to the city services, the sewer and water, and then, uh, if he, for some reason, backed out of that, we'll disconnect him, basically. So, um, that's basically what their agreement says, right? Yeah. So, does that make sense?
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
On Thirty-Second and, and Missouri.
Mm-hmm.
There's that one lane gravel road that goes back there.
Mm-hmm.
Three, four houses.
Mm-hmm.
How far back are we gonna go? Down, down Missouri.
Let me see if I can bring it up here. Um, let me bring it over here so I can find it. Whoops. Yeah, it really is just one lot right now. However, some people around him have expressed some interest, but we have not received a petition from them yet.
Okay, this is a case-by-case situation? Both in that area?
Yeah, it's a, it's a voluntary annexation, so they've, they've come forward, they want this, so, of course, you know, anybody else that wants to come in, we would certainly welcome them in that area.
Just to the west, if you remember, on the land, we had a fire, a fire response to a fire.
Mm-hmm.
It's in the county, actually. Yeah, and we, our response, that we were able to put the fire out before the county arrived, and most people are interested also in, in the rezoning process.
You mean the three that run Calvin and Six Hundred Five West Thirty-Second Street would maybe help me get there?
Yeah.
Or we're related to that.
Okay, so the, the highlighted property is, is what we're talking about today, is what they would annex. These folks have expressed an interest in annexing and doing a development, um, but we don't have anything concrete. I believe this is the house that we were just talking about that had a fire and the city was actually erroneously dispatched to them, but, uh, you know, since we got there, we went ahead, put the fire out and, um, and, uh, it's my understanding, by the, uh, by the time the county arrived, we were cleaning up, right? Is that the right house, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, they are definitely interested in annexing.
Are they those people's names, Dusso? Down there.
People, these those are farther off than they do.
Mr. Callie, I'm a driver, will it?
Yeah.
We're driving up the, up on there.
Yeah. And then you asked about this road, Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Yeah. So, that road, you know, of course, we'd have to get one or both sides of it before we can annex it, but.
Yeah, it's just a gravel road down there now, one lane gravel road.
Yeah, I, I believe it just services one or two houses, maybe?
Do they currently have, I'm not, back on that, do they have water and sewer? Maybe not.
Yeah, these folks, do they have, uh, city water and sewer?
Water, yes.
Okay.
Any, any other questions, sir? Read the ordinance, please, early.
Bill number twenty twenty dash one ninety-two. An ordinance has proven in accepting an agreement bind between the cities today in Missouri and capital carpentry LLC for cities to research for a proposed annexation located in the six hundred block of West Thirty-Second Street.
Second reading, second.
All right. Opposed?
Bill number twenty twenty dash one ninety-two. An ordinance has proven in accepting an agreement bind between the cities today in Missouri and capital carpentry LLC for city sewer services for proposed annexation located in the six hundred block of West Thirty-Second Street.
Final passage.
More call please?
Wyman?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oden?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yeah, that's all I have, President.
Thank you. Department, please, early.
To members of the City Council, Mayor John Hay. Little appointment to the Harrison Authority Board Directors, Anna Conroy, eight one eight three one three highway eighty, continuing Deanna Clark's term expiring June twenty twenty two.
Anna Conroy and I had a significant discussion last week. She, she believes, like I do, as a new member we deployed, uh, last month, that they could be really proactive with this public housing and make some significant profits and utilize that facility as a need for safety. That's actually kind of, you're good, uh, good advocate.
Okay, and we'll also do a correction to the central business and cultural appointment from Mayor John Hay. Section two dash three forty-one, civil ordinances for the cities today in Missouri provides that the term of office for the central business and cultural board directors shall end on January first. For civil affairs appointments that have not been taken according to this section with the term ending in June of each year's fifth, therefore, I would recommend to the council that all terms of the present members of the board of directors be changed upon compliance with section two dash three forty-one. This would lead to correction to the appointment for terms expiring January twenty twenty-one. That would be George Esther, fourteen oh nine West Broadway Avenue, Michelle Torres, three hundred South Ohio Avenue, Level Street, eleven hundred West Fourth Street, David Asher, one sixteen East Main Street, Parkland B A. Return expiring January twenty twenty-two, that would include Deefer Escalo, seventeen eighteen West eighteen, Jim Fisher, fourteen fifteen South Beacon, Mark Aldone, thirty-three oh five Bucking and Court, Travis Ross, fourteen fifty Thistleberry Road. Return six expire in January of twenty twenty-three, that would be Rebecca Emmentalton, seventeen oh five Envy Apple Drive, Senate Rose, twenty-five thirty James Lane, Eddie Norman, three jam South Ohio, and Elizabeth Upland, fifty sixty Lucas Sun.
Any other motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right. All opposed? Hey, what's your license?
I mean, I have two license to this decision, and they're both the noodles. Kathy Gex, during this break time of the three one six seven, a one oh one for a road for a package splitter in Sunday sale, and April, thousand and eight, during this evolving in eighty-eight, at thirty-seven oh one was for a boulevard for a package splitter in Sunday seven.
What's your approval bar?
All right. Anybody from the city council that can make a comment?
Twenty-six seventeen, Kansas City.
Final? Final?
Yes.
That was your comment tonight, uh, you have no more comments.
Anyone saying about this besides the mayor?
Shall we, anything you would like to make comments on?
Can't think of it, sir.
There are none more motion to approve for close session.
I appreciate anybody else.
Good and welcome.
Anybody want to comment that's sitting tonight? Chief? Mr. Whitey, come on. Okay, well, that, well, there's your motion there, Jeff.
We do, we do the close session, very.
All right. Opposed? Like the family, it's good.
My wife's a possible, not living, my wife's a possible. My wife's a possible. And I live. I listen, I listen, but okay, it's okay.